May I ask Teresa a quick question?
Sure.
How long has the festival been in?
The shirt I have on right here is 95. It started in 93. So it would be the, you know, 28th year. Except for, you know, a couple of years we got rained out, you know, and then we moved to the mark after we got rained out. And then city didn't want to shut off the streets, so then we moved back to the city park and so now we're.
We're all about to close the streets now, huh?
So yeah, it's it's an over 25-year-old event, 28-year-old event, has a lot of history. A lot of people in town love it. It is a it is run on a on a shoestring, probably needs to be looked at as far as how we've been doing it. But it is a a very community, you know, public nonprofit is is what it's organized as, so.
Well, thank you, Teresa. Thanks for coming in tonight.
You're welcome. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, get planning. So we are in Citizens to be Heard. I did see that we had some new folks join us. If you'd like to be heard this evening, we do have forms that you can fill out. If you're just showing up now but would like to be heard, you can grab a form right outside. And we just ask that you put your name so that we can identify you in our records. You're here for an agenda item, not a Citizens to be Heard. Okay, well, welcome. We'll get to you at some point tonight. But I'm glad you brought a paper because it might be in a it might be a while away. All right, so now we're going to move on in our agenda to Section 4 Administrative Reports, starting with our active city, acting, our active and acting city manager, Carly.
Hey, good evening. I have three items just to talk to you about tonight. So the first is an update on the Transit Pilot Project. UDOT and I presented to the County Commission last week. They had a lot of really good questions. We've since met with Chris Baird to talk about funding options and he's going to be investigating their ability to participate in the program. So that's ongoing and we expect something on the June 8th agenda, hopefully to move forward. Also, Ben and I, and I think some city council members as well, attended some webinars and info sessions about ARPA funding, which is the American Rescue Plan Act and how we access those funds. So Moab is a non-entitlement unit under that act, so we have to apply for the funds differently than bigger metropolitan cities. We expect to receive approximately $600,000 of basically unrestricted funds from that act. And there's also a local assistance matching grant program of approximately $50 million available. And those funds are restricted to things that are very important to Moab, so that's a good thing, like affordable housing, public revenue loss, water and wastewater infrastructure. So the details on how to access those grants are still forthcoming, but we'll be watching it. And finally, a COVID update. We, as Mira mentioned, we're planning on maybe relaxing mask standards when we go out of the moderate or out of high-risk phase, high transmission phase, and into moderate, probably near the beginning of June. So for those who are vaccinated, masks will be encouraged but not required, most likely. That's all I've got.
Thanks, Carly, and thanks for the the mask update so that we can all be very clear about, you know, the expectations to come and I appreciate that. Okay, well, Chuck, welcome.
Hello.
So good to see you in person.
It's like deja vu all over again.
All over again. So we're Section 42 of our agenda, Engineering Department Update. Chuck Williams.
Yeah, good evening. I wanted to give you an update on the Highway 191 widening project. Project's still moving forward. You may have noticed that they're out tearing up some of the asphalt now and that's, as we discussed before, those are for the access for manholes down to the storm drain. So they have to tear up the around the manhole so they can come back in, pour concrete, bring the rim elevation up to the elevation of the asphalt. So that's why the middle lane is torn up right now in places. You can still turn on like Mi Vida and other places, but use that middle lane cautiously because there are workers in there. And they're still planning to have it open during the weekends, all the all the lanes, unless there's concrete that needs to be setting up over the weekend. Still looking at a July, August, if all things go right, being completed with the main line, the highway widening. But it'll be into the fall before the storm drain activities off to the side. Streets like on Sirmac and down by the wetlands, those will be completed. But just moving forward, there's still workers on the sidewalk. One of the things we've spent time over the last two weeks is coordinating when the new hawk signal will be lit up. And that's going to be near the end of the project because I want to just make sure that we don't have, we're not encouraging people to come through the project through the construction zone. I mean, there's still detours around for pedestrians and bicyclists. And of course, some people find their way through the project anyway, but we don't want to encourage them to go in there before that's all completed. But it will be completed as part of this project, probably in the fall is my guess. Any questions on that?
Chuck, just at 500. So is there, you know, we've talked about that cross-section of, you know, for bicyclists and pedestrians trying to get from, you know, from the end of the existing bike path to to 500. And there's only that pedestrian signal on the south side? Is that, so there is not going to be one on the on the north side of the light? Where I, I mean, like there's the, you have the.
Oh, no, there's just the one, it'll be crossing at the one crosswalk, if I follow you. There'll be the crosswalk on the south side of the signal. There won't be a crosswalk also on the north side. Part of that's due to the closeness to the gas station that's right there. They're a little concerned about putting a crosswalk in on the north side as well. So they want to funnel those folks there. UDOT thinks it's a safer scenario just to keep the one crosswalk on the south side.
So we're still looking at a cross, I mean, an X or a half X to get across. I mean, so I'm just curious how pedestrians are supposed to get over when they're on the wrong side of the street?
Oh, they ju. So if they're on the north side of 500 West by the gas station?
If they're on towards the Denny's side, they're crossing.
Yeah, those 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 pedestrian actuators are, the temporary ones are lit up right now. They're still, they're working, but the permanent ones aren't in, if I'm following your question.
Right, well, no, so 191 and 500, so you only have the one access to get across. So if people are actually coming onto 500 and they're heading, what direction are you heading?
West? Going east, coming from 500 on the highway, yeah.
Yes, so how are they supposed to, so they cross the street, go to the Denny's corner and then go across the street?
Yeah, because they'd be coming up that side of the 500 anyway, the south side of 500.
Okay.
Maybe we should draw a map and I can answer your question better.
It just seems still like a precarious intersection for pedestrians and cyclists.
Chuck, it looked pretty much like it did before all the highway construction started in terms of where the bikes cross. They used to have to cross on the south side. That's still going to be true, that's why.
Yeah, there will be the crosswalk on the south side.
Yeah, yeah.
But I guess not on the north side?
That's correct, it's my understanding.
Again, I'm just, yeah, maybe we can.
We get together and.
Yeah, let's do that.
And sort that out, sorry.
Yeah, because it just, it's still, it seems like a very dangerous intersection coming across.
Yeah, it's not a standard 90-degree intersection and it's wide there. So if there's some things that we can do to talk to them about it, we will, so I'd be happy to meet with you and see.
Hey Karen, will you also pull your mic closer? Because you're pretty far from your mic, so I don't know if, like, we caught all that on the on the YouTube.
So if we can come up with an improvement, I'm happy to take that to UDOT and see if we can do that.
That'd be awesome, okay. Well, for what it's worth, I think we brought that to UDOT quite a few times and then they made their decision. I mean, I know that that was a comment that we made several times.
We were also under the impression that it was changing too, that's what I thought, so.
If, well, then if.
Yeah, that's fine, we'll get together.
We could definitely bring it back to you.
Then the last thing I'd say on that is real quick is that it's on the highway, but it's not on the widening project. But I met with the traffic engineer today. Two things that are going to happen in the next few months probably is there'll be on northbound traffic coming up to 400 East. They're going to put it in a right-hand turn lane onto 400 East. The police chief and I have spent a lot of time over the last several months talking about accidents and near accidents because the shoulder is so wide there that some people think, oh, it's a right-hand turn lane. And then other people go, oh, no, there's no signage for a right-hand turn lane and there's conflicts. But UDOT's, I've reviewed the design and it looks fine with me and they think in the next few months that'll be installed. And then the other things they're going to look at reducing, you know, now that we've got Aggie Boulevard and Mill Creek Drive, that intersection, those of you who have driven it, it's, it can take you a while to get out in traffic. And if you get, you know, because there's so much traffic these days going north-south and that's a 55 mile an hour zone. So they're going to look at slowing that down to 45 at the top of the hill to the south prior to getting down there. So I think that'll be a plus until we, until we get an intersection in there ultimately. Then also wanted to mention that on the City-County Unified Transportation Plan, we met as a committee, three staff members from the city, three staff members from the county, reviewed the proposals. We had five proposals from five qualified firms and went through and made a selection of one firm in the county, in the county and the city, we negotiated with them. They will complete the scope of work within the budget that they submitted. And I think it's going to be in the next county commission's agenda because the county's the contracting agency, if you recall. The firm is Kimley Horn. Some of you may remember that they did some work for us before in the parking structure. But there was pretty much, it was unanimous that that was the selection of the firm, so we're excited about that. With hopefully a notice to proceed by the end of June, it'll be a, real quick, there's going to be a technical advisory committee composed of staff. And then there'll be a small stakeholder group composed of city appointees, not by staff, but you know, by others, and then county appointees, and there may even be some joint, like, business representatives for the city and the county. Because rather than have a group of 40 people, I'd rather have, it's easier to work with a group of 15 people. And there will be a public involvement campaign as well as the stakeholder and technical advisory committee. And that work should take about a year, which the, you know, the regional plan took 10 months. So it seems in in order with a lot of the amount of public involvement we're going to have that it takes that long. Then the last thing I'd mention is that the roundabout at 100 West and 400 East, north, excuse me, we, UDOT has selected the consultant. We've negotiated with them in terms of scope of work. We've had them add in some more public involvement and we think that that's close to being resolved, that negotiation for scope and fee, in which case then I'll be coming to counsel in the next, probably a month, for authorization for us to contribute our amount of money. And then, again, it's about a million and a half dollars that we, that UDOT will dedicate towards the project. Our costs are on the order of $15,000 this budget year and $100,000 next budget year. And this is through the Urban Small Highways Program, so just the update on that.
Awesome. Thanks for those updates, Chuck. Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, well, stick around because we'll see you.
I'll be back.
In a few. Thanks, Chuck. 4-3 Finance Department Update. Ben, welcome. Will you just do me a quick favor? Will you just stand up and wave to everyone because you're still relatively new and that way everyone can recognize who you are? Welcome tonight. Thanks for prepping an update for us.
Yeah, like I said, it's really good to meet most of you really face-to-face for the first time, so.
That's exciting. So so, well, now I'm just curious, so who are you meeting for the first time?
So I did meet Toni in the hall the other night, but everybody else is, I've not met, face-to-face.
Oh, that's awesome.
And Zoom just doesn't feel quite as genuine, quite as real.
He's taller in person, isn't he?
I think Mike might have been a little disappointed by my height because you did say that I was tall and he said, oh, about my height.
He's very tall. So let's make sure that we, so you're our first dongle of the of the year.
I am, and we're still blinking.
And so we're going to say goodbye to the delicate arch here and here. And then we should have the images pop up.
Okay, we are connecting, so. The first thing that I wanted to do was just provide a brief overview of the Finance Treasury Department and where we're at, what we have going on right now. Seems to be a very busy time of year. There we go.
Awesome. Looks like we've got it on both screens. Great.
Perfect, okay, so we have.
And are we good in the YouTube world? Awesome.
This is more administrative, but we've got, we're undergoing a financial software transition, right? Switching from Polaris to Casell, both great government finance accounting software suites. And we are drudging through it right now. It's quite a challenge. Anytime you switch accounting software, there's a lot involved organization-wide. The other three, the next three are items that will be, they're essentially in the pipeline right now. So our audit services, we have out for RFP. I anticipate in a meeting in June. I will not be presenting that, but probably Carly will be presenting that after we get those bids back from possible vendors. Property tax outreach, public outreach, so this is an important.
Will the audit service exceed our procurement that needs, that it would need to come to counsel?
I think it would not exceed that, you know.
No need to bring it to us if it doesn't exceed that, right?
Are you asking for the need for the RFP or the need to bring it to the council?
Oh, you want us to look at the RFP?
The RFP is usually the council approves it.
Okay.
Like, even if it doesn't meet that financial threshold, I think it's important that you guys are comfortable with the audit because it really is for your, for the council's benefit, so. Fiscal year 21 budget amendment and fiscal year 22 budget preparation as we move into the next phase of both of those budgets. There's a lot of work to do there and the Treasury Office is very busy with business licensing among other. So it's quite an exciting time right now. I apologize for the attachments in the packet. There were three sets of financial statements and anybody who sifted through those with a fine-tooth comb I would maybe be a little concerned about. The reason for those attachments is a formality because it's a state requirement that the council be presented financials quarterly. And so this is fulfilling that requirement. The third quarter are relevant and I, and this slide provides some of the main highlights of that financial statement update. So 75% of the year is complete because this is through March of 2021. And our revenues are over that 75%. So if you're assuming, if you look at revenues and expenditures as a linear with no seasonality among those, then you want those to be in line with where you're at in the year. So we're at 80% of budgeted revenues, but this, the big asterisk here is that it does not include the unbudgeted CARES funding. So we received over $1 million of of CARES revenue and you just have to keep that in mind. So we are under budget as far as revenues are concerned, but that that CARES money did make up for that difference. We're at 67% of budgeted expenditures in the general fund and so that that is trending good. That's, you know, you want to be slightly under budget relative to the year. And for anybody who got out their calculator, you would find that this, those financial reports show a 25% fund balance, general fund balance. This is an overstatement and this is the result of a prior year fund allocation that needs to be made in order to bring other budgets out of deficit. So basically, last year there were budgeted transfers to other funds that just didn't take place. And so when we do a budget amendment, we'll have to do those prior year fund transfers just to bring those up to up to that so that they're not negative, essentially. My kind of back-of-the-napkin calculation shows our general fund balance in the low teens, 13% to 14% is where we're at with that. And like I mentioned in the last meeting, the current state limit, the ceiling on that is 35%. So our Recreation Fund is another one that I thought was noteworthy to hit on because of the budget, because they're under budget on revenues, they're at 59%, but their expenditure is also in line with that. So they're at 52% of budgeted expenditures, so. And then there was a Class C revenue allocation, just kind of a technicality there that I included in the notes. So the next item that I wanted to touch on is what's next, especially as we, I mean, the budget is one of the most important things that the council does on an annual basis. So we have, in June, you typically have a budget amendment and you have a, you're adopting a final budget for the next year. This next slide outlines what we have coming. So in the, for the the current or the current fiscal year, we will introduce and discuss some budget adjustments on June 8th. That will give the council some time to discuss those and express any concerns you may have. And then we'll have a hearing for, a public hearing and possible action on those adjustments on June 22nd. So we'll, more information on that is coming. And then, as you know, with our fiscal year 22 budget, where the council is considering a property tax, those, I have a rough outline there of when we will introduce. So we will introduce an amended final budget on July 11th, have a truth in taxation hearing on July 20th, and then adopt a final budget within the budgeted property tax with that budgeted property tax revenue if the council decides to proceed with that on August 10th. Now, what I wanted to do with that timeline is build in enough, essentially build in at least one meeting's worth of slack, I guess we'll call it, so that if there was further discussion, if we weren't ready to take action yet, every, and everything got pushed back, we wouldn't have to schedule special meetings to adopt that. So those.
Slack would be good.
Yes.
Especially since that's a big, very big discussion around property tax.
Yep, and something that we don't want to just brush over and take lightly, so. The next thing that I wanted to touch on, and this this ties to.
Oh, wait, council members, do you have any questions about that timeline that Ben proposed, just so that we're super clear?
Just one. In the past, we've tried to get our budget done on a shorter timeline. Is there any particular reason why it's later in the year?
Right, so with truth in taxation, you, there's this built-in extension because of the process that's built in. So the deadline by the state to adopt a budget for a municipality is the end of June, I believe it's June 22nd. And when you're doing truth in taxation, that is extended to September 1st. And so we would still be ahead of schedule, maybe not quite as much as the city has been in the past, but we would still be ahead of schedule. And we could, if desired, we could move those dates up. At this point, there's no reason that if we wanted to move forward, that July 11th, July 20th and August 10th, all of those could be moved up one meeting. It would make that June 22nd meeting very finance-intensive between the public hearing and possible action on the fiscal year 21 amendment. So that's, that was the logic behind that, structuring it that way.
Thanks.
So this this slide, I'll just touch on this really quick. So the municipality's revenue is typically linear throughout the, throughout the year. That red line between 8 and 10%, so this is when we receive the revenue throughout the year. And obviously, Moab Cities is tied to the tourism because that that plays such a heavy part in our revenue sources. And so where you have minimal tourism in December, January and February, that's where you see that dip, starting in February, March and April. So our revenues really dipped down. And this is the historical average before any of the weirdness with COVID happened because that has kind of thrown off all financial modeling for the next 10 years. Basically, we'll have to exclude these two fiscal years. The next line that I wanted to show, this was the year of that COVID started essentially. So, and remember, these are percentages of seasonality. It doesn't, these don't represent high or low revenue numbers. This is just when we received the revenue throughout the year. So the red, that red line is, that's the March beginning with COVID. And these are, these are sales tax revenues, our primary revenue sources. And this is now our, what I called the COVID recovery year, where March, April and May, we have seen unprecedented revenue numbers. I don't know if you guys have seen that in higher volumes of tourism traffic this spring, but we have higher revenue numbers than we've ever seen in the past. So that revenue, you you can really see that we've inverted from the COVID year and really from the historical average. So the blue represents where we're at so far this year. And the really exciting part of this is where we get into our revenues as a whole. So this is our, this is the revenue as we would expect to see it, the gray line. And the blue line is where we're currently at. So we didn't cross that threshold of, we didn't exceed our budgeted revenues until about February. And then, beginning in March, we finally crested past where we expected to see them. And now, since then, April, May and projected in June are higher, high enough numbers to make up the difference of the prior year. So what we're seeing is that our budgeted revenues are actually over where we'd anticipated to see them when we started this year.
And I feel like I always have to, like, broken record this, but just so that everyone is really clear, we're looking at, so we get sales tax revenue, like cash in the bank, two months after collected. And so we kind of, if we get money in June, it's actually from April. So is this showing cash in the bank or is this showing?
Yeah, so this is when the money is actually received.
So cash in the bank was in February break even.
And same with the seasonality chart that I previously showed. That's why in April, we would see that dip in revenues, even though that's a heavy tourist month.
Right.
So you don't see the benefit of that April tourism until July.
Thank you.
June, excuse me.
June. One, two.
The reason that I wanted to build into this seasonality of revenue and where we're at is really just to tell the story of revenue in Moab. We're kind of in a very unpredictable state right now. I looked at, when I, when I looked at the budgeted revenues for our next fiscal year budget, I think that's a pretty conservative number. And it, you know, as we look at projects that we're considering funding, such as this transit project, it's, okay, where do we find the money to do that? And I say, well, our revenues are conservative enough that we could bump those up a little to to pay for that. And ultimately, as, what I would recommend is that we, we, because of the unknown, basically, what I've established through all this seasonality of revenue and historic trends is that we have no idea what our revenue sources are going to look like moving into next year. Are they going to stabilize and move back to where fiscal year 17 and 18 were? Carly asked me how I would project that earlier this week. And I said, well, you know, you've got vacant, the number of vacant rooms available, has that increased in the last three years? There's a lot of economic factors you can look at, but ultimately, it's really just our best guess. And when it comes to government budgeting, conservative revenues are the way to go. You want to definitely be conservative in revenues because if you don't hit those revenue numbers, you have to make it up somehow. And so the net, the last item that I wanted to touch on was this, was the transit proposal from a financial perspective. So we know that this will obligate us to future expenses in future years. The primary model, so what this is showing is is three different scenarios. The primary model, so what this is showing is, is three different scenarios. So the blue, the blue charts are how we had originally talked about it, where the city will be obligated to pay for that in the fourth and fifth year of the transportation funding. The orange model, where you have this, the slower, the gradual increase, this is another option that the consultant prepared and showed how you could build up and share in some of those costs with the hotspot funding over the five years, instead of it all hitting in year four and five. From a financial perspective, you really don't want to just commit to a financial obligation and not have to pay for it until years four and five. You really want either a slow buildup, like the orange model represents, or the gray model, where you're actually setting money aside each year. So in year one, we're actually setting aside $200,000 for that, for that program. I really like that second model, the orange one that they produced, because that would prepare the city gradually, so it's not a, a major commitment. And you build up to it until that sixth year, when the city, when, when essentially the, the program is finished and the city has to decide how to move forward from there, whether to continue the program or not. So all of that said, I think the question that I would pose is where do we get this funding from? So year one, under both first and second scenario, we can find that money. It's $50,000 for the marketing and some of the initial costs. And, and where I would recommend finding that revenue is in, is in the conservative budget. You could, you could build up those numbers just, just a little bit, still be conservative, but find that $50,000. When you get into years two, three, four, and five, that's where it's a little more concerning, where you're coming up with half a million dollars to fund the transit program without a dedicated revenue source. It's not necessarily going to generate any revenue on its own, any substantial revenue at least. And so that's where the big question mark is. And ultimately, the conclusion that I came to, I, I, you know, it's, it's uncomfortable to say it, but the conclusion I came to was a property tax is the best source of revenue for a project like this, moving into the next year. So that, I would welcome any questions for the finance department, but that wraps up my presentation for.
I think that is going to bring up a whole lot of questions, but I don't know if we really want to entertain those questions now, or let this information that you have presented marinate a bit. So thank you for your update and this presentation. And unless there's a burning question that somebody has to ask right now, I would like to, of course.
Just, just one, so this, the, the funding that is proposed right now, that is what we're projecting, excluding the county's half of their portion?
Correct, yep. But it also does include the, oh, I forgot the acronym, Carly.
The FTA funds.
FTA.
The 5311 funds.
Oh, right, so that does not include that either?
It does include.
Oh, it does include that, okay, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so we asked him to sort of look at, like, maybe a worst-case scenario, if we were to carry the project by ourselves, if the county didn't participate.
Okay.
Just to understand the feasibility and where, where those ceilings are.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Ben. And thanks for warming up the dongle.
It's been a retirement.
Which is the name of the thing that helps the screen project itself. Awesome. Hey, Summer, I just noticed that I don't have the remote control, so just, not that I'm going to turn it off now, but sometimes it feels nice to turn it off. Is that for this one, or both? Okay, thanks, thank you. Okay, thanks, Ben, we're at 4-4, City Attorney Updates, e-bikes. Welcome, Lori.
Thank you. Just a quick update on what has happened since the April 27th city council meeting, where the agenda item regarding electric bicycles was tabled. So a few updates. I think in part, the item was tabled because of an email received from Paul Spencer, from the Trail Mix County Advisory Committee. And I just wanted to update that that email was sent from Paul in his personal capacity and was his personal opinion regarding electric bicycles. And since that time, the Trail Mix Committee has actually had an opportunity to meet. They met on May 11th, and they considered a proposal regarding electric bicycles. And their proposal, which they have made a recommendation to the county commission, so they're a county advisory commission, their proposal is that the county adopt a one-year trial period to allow Class 1 e-bikes on paved paths north of the city of Moab. So what is, what's happening now is that that proposal will go to the county. I spoke to Christina Sloan this morning, and she is working on potentially getting that on the county commission's agenda in their next meeting, which would be June 1st. The idea behind it is that we were trying to get all of the various entities, governmental entities, to generally be on the same page with regard to electric bicycles, so that we don't have a patchwork of someone thinking they can take an electrical, electric bicycle in some portion of a pathway, only to find they've crossed a jurisdiction, and it's confusing that they can no longer, you know, that at that, a certain point, electric bicycle is prohibited. So that is where things are. I think it's, it's working out, the commission, the county commission will take a look at what the proposal is. Chris Baird indicated that there may be some modifications, significant modifications to what Trail Mix had proposed. So it's sort of a stay tuned. I think we're in a good position, because we have a potential ordinance to consider, and we can make that in line with other jurisdictions, depending on if other jurisdictions decide they want Class 1 bikes, or Class 1, 2, and 3, or maybe certain types of classes of electric bikes with speed limits. So I think we're in a good position to kind of wait and see what other jurisdictions do, including the county and BLM, and we're sort of poised to be ready once they're finding a path, no pun intended.
And to be clear, our ordinance is really the definition of the, the bicycle definition itself. It's not, we wouldn't say you're allowed or not allowed. It's, it's coming out of the definition, is that correct?
Well, so what we were doing is, we were taking out of the definition of motorized vehicles in our municipal code, we were taking out electric bicycles. Then, that would mean essentially, all types of electric bicycles would be allowed on city pathways, so that would be Class 1, 2, and 3. Should the council decide that they didn't want that, we could put a, some type of code in our municipal code saying, you know, in the pathway section, Class 1 electric bicycles are allowed, and we would, could have put a speed limit.
Oh, so we wouldn't do the definition?
We would, we would need to do that regardless. So it, it would be probably two-step housekeeping to make it happen.
And council, I just was a little unsure if, just based on the tabling, the, the motion to table, if we wanted to go ahead and be proactive, or if we did, in fact, want to wait until we saw what the county decided about the path north before we made our decision. So I'm happy either way. We can put it on our agenda and decide how we want, if we want to allow e-bikes, or we can wait and see how the, the county acts, right? Because essentially, it's May 25th, they're looking at it.
June, potentially as early as June 1.
June 1, so, but if they decide to not pass something or table it, do you still want to see it on our next agenda? That's the question.
Well, I've been thinking about our tabling, and I think my, I felt like it was easy to look to Trail Mix, but since then, I'm thinking that the, the city paths are a little different, and I would like the city to be more engaged as a partner on what we want to see, and perhaps the county could be responsive to us as well, as opposed to us being just responsive to them. So I would like to see it sooner than later, and have more of a dialogue between the city and the county, and that might ultimately result in more consistent rules across all the paths.
All right, well, unless I hear from any council members in opposition, it'll be on our next agenda. All right. And, and not in favor and opposition of the decision, but just when we make the decision, when it shows up on our agenda, if that makes sense. We'll talk about it at the next council meeting. It'll be on the agenda. Okay. Thanks, Lori.
Great, thank you.
Any questions for Lori?
Oh, and these aren't electric bicycles, these are just regular bicycles.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're moving on to then Section 5 of our agenda, Mayor and Council Reports. I got a lot of scribble apologies. I serve on the League of Cities and Towns Board, and so I met as both a board member with their board, but also with the Legislative Policy Committee meeting. There's a truckload of federal dollars coming our way, and the intention, as Carly mentioned, is pretty much infrastructure and growth. I think, like Carly said, there's this state match option, there's the Go Utah, which is formerly known as GOED grant money option, plus we're getting a city allocation. And so, again, truckload of money coming our way, and we need to really be thinking about what we're gonna, what we're gonna do. Are we gonna, you know, what projects we're gonna put it? So that CIP list is gonna really come in handy. And just something else, the league is also hiring a position to be an advisor to all cities and towns on the ARPA money spending. And I'm really excited about that, because I feel like we do look to the league a lot, like, can we spend this? Like, that was happening all last year with COVID dollars. Can we spend it? I don't know what to ask the league, so they're solidifying this position. It's just a temporary, so, so we will have a direct link to, you know, council on how we spend the ARPA money too, if we have questions, or as we have questions. What else? Oh, I met with this group called Voterize, and it's like a get out the vote campaign. I just need to check in with all of you to say yes to them. They, if, so they're doing this campaign, if I were running this city, what would I do? And it's trying to engage younger voters. If somebody wins in Grand County, we have to commit to mentoring them in some way, or more, I do. So with your permission, I will take this challenge, and we'll see who wins. If it's somebody from Grand County, it could be really cool. But as we've had an intern in the mayor's office, I think it fits nicely with that, so, unless anyone's opposed to that, I will confirm that with them. I'm getting a lot of concern about parklit dining from, that I'm just hearing, so I just wanted to put that out there, that there was excitement around it during the pandemic, but now people are like, is it going back? And so I just wanted to share that I've been contacted by several business owners that are concerned about it. So I just think, as it comes back to us for finalization, we need to do some outreach to the business owners of that area. What else? Oh, there was a group that came through town, the Salt Lake Air Protectors was the organization that hosted them. The president of the Navajo Nation was set to be part of it, but he unfortunately did not do the run, but they ran from Bear's Ears, it was all different tribal members running from Bear's Ears to Salt Lake City, called Running is Medicine. We hosted them at the Mark, and it was a pretty incredible event. A lot of really dynamic indigenous folks running. It was really, a really beautiful event, and it was really nice to host it outside at the Mark. I sent you all the Silverton link to their meeting. It certainly does feel like we're not alone in the challenge between, you know, making decisions about OHVs in our community. And so I just wanted to tell you, please, you know, reach out to them, because they're certainly looking for solutions, and they've, you know, are kind of going through it like we are. Student of the Month's been happening, oh, there's, so we're starting the events of the movie nights at the park, the Thelma and Louise, we watched a little bit, but it was too windy, so they shut her down. But a lot of movies that are happening in the park, it just, it was really nice to be there, so I definitely encourage you all to attend, and folks in the community to attend, because it's so neat. And staff, recreation staff in particular, did such a great job, and Beagle did such a great job at producing the event. There was Euros, and popcorn, and beer, there was a whole beer garden. So Beagle was calling it kind of like a brewy-type thing. It was really fun, it was really fun to see people in person. And, oh, and then one other thing, I had breakfast with Dan Hemmert, who's down in town. And so Dan Hemmert is the new, he used to be in the legislature, he was a, in, a senator in the legislature, and now he has been appointed by our governor to serve as the director of Go Utah, which was GOED. And so I was able to, you know, over bacon, tell our story. And we talked, he had quite a few questions about housing. So I know that housing is definitely on the mind of our legislators, and what they do with it, I won't, I don't know. But it's certainly what they're, they're hoping to throw money toward. So with our Walnut Lane project, I really encourage staff, you know, and, and how we're thinking about the evolution of that project, that we look at, whether it's ARPA funding or just all of these other little mini dump trucks of funding that are coming their way to cities and towns, that we really look at whether or not funding could fit with Walnut Lane. One other one is the pre-development grant that was awarded by the legislature. We might be able to access that funding for, for Walnut Lane, so. That's it for me. And I'm going to have Ronnie go next. Ronnie, can you hear me?
Maybe she's just unmuting her phone. Did you fall asleep?
Yes, I can hear, can you guys hear me?
I can hear you just fine.
Okay, I'm going to apologize to everyone for not being there in person. As many of you know, I'm helping my mom with a move, she's been in the same house for 50 years, and it takes a while. Are you still there?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, I'm getting some weird feedback, so I'm just going to warn you all, I'm going back and forth between watching you on YouTube, which has about a 20, 30-second delay, and then trying to follow you guys when you need me to pop in live, but I can just hear you guys a lot better on YouTube. So I will continue to try and pop back and forth, to the extent that it just allows me to hear you all better. So I don't have much to report, other than Joette Langeneath and Mary McGann and I had a Zoom meeting with Ike Smith from the Department of Energy, kind of shortly known as EM1, but he's actually the, let me get his title here right, the acting, oh, Assistant Secretary for the Office of Environmental Management at the Department of Energy. And some of you have met Ike, when he came to celebrate the last 1 million tons moved of the entrepile in the fall before COVID. And last year, because of COVID, we couldn't celebrate, but hopefully this fall, we'll be celebrating another million tons moved. And anyway, we were having a meeting to kind of discuss changes at Department of Energy, because sometimes when you have an administrative change, you have changes in staff. We wanted to make sure he was still one of our main contacts, and also ask how lobbying was working in DC right now, under COVID, or just these times. And also get a sense on whether we might have the same budget moving forward for the project, because it's so pivotal for this project to maintain funding, if not increase it, just to stay on the timeline for moving the pile. So things sound like they're good, and there seems to be a lot of support at the Office of Management and Budget and the Administration for this project, and that's in large thanks to our local DOE staffer, whom any of you have met, Russell McAllister, and just their efficiency at the site. And so hopefully, funding will stay the same, and then there's even a chance it may go up some. So we'll remain in touch with Ike and his staff, and we're also talking about some of the things you need to start to discuss about site closure as you move closer. He was saying, okay, you guys last did a community vision in 2018. Sorry, my phone is making ping-pong sounds. And it might be time, we would normally do that in 2023, but he said it might be wise to update that even sooner. And also, he is starting, he and Russell are starting to help us understand some of the steps you have to go through for land transfer as a site closes, and who qualifies to potentially get that land. So they're giving us some examples of other communities who've been through that, so we can understand who has access to that land under what, and how that process works. I think that was about it, so I will step off and go back to watching you guys on the YouTube, and then I will just try and track when you need me to actually vote or say something. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Hey Ronnie, I'm just curious, because I ran into this when I was doing what you're trying to do, how far behind real time is your YouTube presentation right now? Seconds, minutes, what?
And counting.
Oh, sorry, was that a question for me?
Yeah, we, Mike was just curious of the YouTube lag time, is it about 30 seconds?
Um, yeah, Summer had told me she thought it was about 20 to 30, and while I was watching the video, and then I was listening on my phone, and I just set a little timer, yeah, and it seemed pretty much like 29:30, you're, you're right on, Summer, yeah. And then sometimes, you know, if I hit the pause on the YouTube, I just gotta, I gotta, I gotta re-up, so I'm, I'm back with you guys live, so I will, I will do that right now.
Okay, thanks, Ronnie.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mike, you're up.
Well, the usual stuff for me, noisy stuff, I'm switched, Laurie pointed out that what the town really needs is motorists who are driving off-road vehicles, really don't know how loud their vehicles are out on the roads, and so the idea now, I'm just writing an app for, for an Android phone, which will tell you, and tell you accurately enough, there's a lot of stuff out there you can buy, but it's kind of cheap junk, and won't give us a separate display sign, and won't be reportable to another central facility, because one thing I'd like to be able to do is after the ordinance goes into effect, we're all gonna be interested in, well, did it get quieter? And these instruments will give you a way to hang a quantitative number on that, so that'll be good. And continuing on with water work, Water Work and Moab Area Watershed Partnership, it looks like, I'm guessing I'm gonna end up chairing that bunch next year after my council term ends, so I'll still be involved with water work, I'm not gonna go away. And there's some interesting meetings coming up with the city, and so we're making progress, and I guess I'll stop.
So Chair of Moab, that's awesome. Great. Thanks, Mike.
You're welcome.
Mary, I'm, can I ask Mike a question? So, Mike, I heard that Ken's Lake is at 694 acre feet this year, and this time last year, we were at 1,741, is that correct?
Sounds about right, it's full at over 25, 2,000, 2,500, it's a long ways from being full.
And when's the expected time of?
It's not gonna fill up this year, huh? So the county is drilling a new well, the 203, $200,000, to take valley fill aquifer water out and pump that water into Ken's Lake. It's kind of, you guys may remember reading about California a few years ago, you know, when they had a severe drought going on out there, and agriculturally, they were resorting to mortgaging their futures, so to speak, so they were drilling wells and pumping groundwater in hopes it would rain later on. They may have picked up some of that by now, but that's kind of what we're doing out there in the, in the valley floor now, mining water. I say mining, we're taking water out of valley fill aquifer to keep Ken's Lake, more water in Ken's Lake, so they don't run out of water by the end of the summer.
Is there discussions of cutting water back for irrigation users?
Oh yeah, the Grand County, pretty routinely, in the last couple of years now, is this, you don't get 100% of your water, you get, you might, it all depends on how much they got to give.
Right.
So it could be 50%, it could be 60%, the idea is to get people throwing hay and stuff out there, give them a chance to get a crop if they can.
Thank you, Mike. Tony?
Okay, I think these are hard to hear, so I will try and speak loudly.
Bring the microphone a little bit closer.
Actually, my cord's kind of stuck.
You got a stuck cord?
Yeah, I do. I went to a Housing Authority meeting, and Cinem Court Maps and the Virginian are all full, we still have a housing crisis, I won't belabor that. This particular meeting, there was a lot of financial discussion and banking discussion, and if you're like me, your eyes kind of glaze over, but it's all public record, and if you want to know more about that, you can contact HOSU. Their self-help homes are moving along with some glitches at a royal crossing. It doesn't seem like it's anything that's insurmountable, it's frustrating for those who want to begin their, their construction, but this is a new process with a learning curve, and these kind of programs take a few minutes to learn, and it seems like the people that are managing those are, are doing a good job, and they are, they are working really hard to get that, to get that project off the ground. I went to a Kenyanland Healthcare Special Service District Board, we had the review of the yearly audit, and the review of finances year-to-date. This was my week for finances, so it was very, very exciting. We had some discussion about DISH payment to MRH, and DISH payment is disproportionate share hospital, it's a Medicaid program that is, monies are distributed to hospitals that have a really high, high percentage of Medicaid and uninsured patients. It has to come through, that money has to come from the federal government through another governmental agency, so a special service district or a municipality. And it makes sense to me to have that money come through the, the healthcare service district rather than somewhere else, because they understand what it's for, and it's, it's always a struggle to get it, because it used to come from mineral lease money, so there was, it was plentiful, it's, that's not the source anymore, and some of the sources have to be cultivated. So it's, it's an ongoing concern, but I, I think that, that it, it will be resolved, maybe not this year, but, but soon. The administrative and nursing updates, there have been some in-person visits that have resumed, which is excellent for residents and their families, that has really brightened their spirits and their morale, and we, we forget if we haven't had a loved one in that situation, how important those visits are. And to date, no residents have contacted COVID, which I think we are one of the very few nursing facilities in the state that that has, that has happened, where it hasn't happened. All of our residents have been vaccinated, most of the staff has, there are a few that are reluctant. And we have, there has been a few staff tests positive, but they're most often caught before their shift, and they have not been interacting with residents, so that, that is really, that says a lot for our nursing staff, both at Moab Regional and at the, the care center. And I went to a museum meeting, and the museum will open for in-person visits on June 1st. Masks and social distancing will be required, but reservations will not. The hours of the museum will be Tuesday through Saturday, noon until 8:00 PM. Currently on display, they have the quilt show, and until 6:01, a reservation is required, but they really are pretty, they're worth going over to look at. There are two new trustees on the museum board, Megan Blackwelder and Cindy Hardgrave, and, let's see, Tuesdays at the museum are happening every Tuesday, you can watch those on YouTube or online, they're, they're really, they're really some interesting topics, and, and the staff has made a, a real effort to get interesting people. And the school programs and the field trips are in process, they are beloved, and they are so successful, and I want to be in fourth grade again. And I think some of us don't realize that all of our school kids, our school-aged kids don't get the opportunity to get out into the parks and into the backcountry and on the trails, and just, just learn about the geography, the geology, and the history, and the, the staff and, and the volunteer that coordinates those programs has, has done a really, really excellent job. And on a personal note, my husband and I renewed our vows for our 2015 anniversary the other day, so that was very exciting.
Congratulations.
And I don't know how you stay married 25 years, you just do it.
Yeah, we all need advice. Thanks, Tony. Karen?
Let's see, I had a key leaderboard meeting, and this is the first meeting that we've had in almost a year. Discussions began again about how to break through intergenerational poverty, issues of housing, early childcare, substance abuse, and lack of financial literacy for adults were all issues brought about and talked about in this group. Attendance within the school district is becoming a bigger issue, even outside of COVID-19, and this is being exasperated with online schooling options. So there's a, a community-wide concern about attendance for, for our youth. And the, the, the school district is very keen to try to get the SRO back into the schools again, and Grand County is looking to help fund that position, and, and I know that there is funding through our police department if we ever get our police department up to full staff. So they're missed, and SRO is missed at the school. I had a workforce shortage chamber chat, the discussions again were about workforce shortages and what we can do as business members and government entities to try to help. Housing is the biggest issue that was discussed. There were some questions directed to city and county on how we could help expedite housing, and some of the questions that were directed to, to city and county was the possibility of temporarily allowing travel trailers at residential lots, and maybe offering a variance if trailers have bathrooms, so they could be exempt. I know we have, you know, strong codes against that, but these are just out-of-the-box discussions that are, that are happening, and also relaxing requirements to allow and to incentivize ADUs was also another topic of discussion. I attended, it was called Holy Spokes, Historic Funding for Active Transportation, there's $35 million in appropriation funding through HB 433, this is gonna be managed through UDOT, and it's, it was just an encouraging discussion about having plans in place to, to try to get funding when available. I too sat in on the webinar with the Treasury Guidance for the American Rescue Plan Act. Some of the biggest things that I took from that was, there was strong advice from the groups to look at timing for this funding, and not to overwhelm contractors with everyone trying to use the money at the same time with, for, you know, housing sidewalks and roads, because right now, our economy is running really hot in terms of inflation. In fact, in April, we're up 4.2% inflation rate, which is, is quite a bit. It's, for some economists, and probably Ben, there's reason to be a little concerned, and I appreciate your, your presentation tonight and being fiscally conservative, because we, we really don't know what's gonna be happening down the line. So I guess Carly and Emily, since you guys, I mean, Emily, since you're on the board, you know, if there's an opportunity to work with other communities to leverage the money that's gonna be coming for communities for infrastructure, if, you know, we're not doing it when labor, you know, lumber's at 250% the amount of labor typically, or lumber typically.
We've got three years to spend ARPA money, so, because I think the intention is that the, you know, as money's coming, projects take a bit with government, so there is a three-year.
Yeah, but everyone's excited, and everyone's gonna want to be ready to have those projects in place, so, and then that was, that was it for me.
Thanks, Karen. Kaylin?
I have a Kenyanland Solid Waste Authority Board meeting, the entity which is, has been commonly known as the Solid Waste District, but it's doing business as CSWA now, and the one-
Is that it, Ken?
CSWA.
Slaw?
CSWA, Kenyanland Solid Waste Authority. And the one item of potential interest to the city is that they need to purchase some more recycling bins, and we're considering different colors, and there's lots of different colors available, but if you have any input, you could let me know.
Or residents, but, or for commercial, like for us at our parks, or?
Well, it's the plastic 95 gallon ones that are currently brown and yellow.
Nice.
But they're not gonna be, they're gonna transition to something other than brown and yellow. The Moab Dark Skies met, and our Sustainability Director attended, and we were talking about the plan for the next 2.5 years, that's how long we have until the sunset provision of the city and the county lighting ordinances kick in, and how Moab Dark Skies can support the community in being ready for that benchmark. And although there's a variety of engagement tactics planned for, we mainly focused on the city and county roles, and especially the city, since it was just city folks that were there this time. And one of the things that we talked about, we, well, we, afterwards, Meele and I looked at the inventory of city lighting that was done almost in 2019, and whether or not we could budget anything at all for, to bring some of those non-conforming lights into compliance, just so that we can begin, continue leading by example. And then I also did a Zoom Town Hall with County Commissioner Walker. It wasn't sort of a trial, it wasn't super well advertised, but we had a small and passionate group of citizens who seemed grateful for the opportunity to interact with elected officials, and we talked about what are housing and transportation mainly. That's what I've got.
Thanks, Kaylin. Where are we on our agenda? We are now at Section 6, Special Events, 6:1, Approval of a Special Event Permit for Scots on the Rocks, Briefing and Possible Action. Kelly, you're welcome.
Hi.
Thanks for wearing your pin.
All right, so I'm bringing this event to present to you because according to our city code, it qualifies as a Level 2 event, which requires council approval, and that's based on the fact that their attendance is expected to be over 300 per day. So in your packets, there's information about their current application for this year, they've also included some examples from their past years, and they have a COVID planning guide, which we are aware that guidelines will likely change between now and September, but we wanted to make sure that they were planning on what we were going with, and we can always kind of adjust those as needed. And then they have their facility agreements and local consent. One of the things I did want to bring up was that they are requesting a parade that would come down Center Street. It wouldn't be on Highway 191 at all, so there would be no need for UDOT to be involved, but in talking with Public Works and the Police Department, we do have some concerns whether our staffing levels would be able to accommodate that, based on where we currently are, that could very well change, but as of now, that is a concern, just on our side for staffing. So are there any questions about the event?
Might I entertain a motion?
I move to approve a special event license for the 2021 Scots on the Rock event to be held in the city of Moab at the Center Street Ballparks.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Kaylin, thank you, Tony, for the second, thank you, Kelly, for putting this all together, I think you did a great job, thanks for your work on this. I'm hopeful that other event organizers see that we are, you know, accepting event applications and processing them, and so it's nice, you know, for them to know who you are as well. Any other comments?
I do have one quick question, Kelly.
I know why they came to the city, Kelly, because I was out briefly at the festival last year out at the Spanish Trail Arena, and it was blowing-
Windy.
Awful, yeah, so they're figuring the wind won't blow as bad in the city, that's why they're here.
No wind?
Yeah.
Well, and also, they're, they're not competing with the Folk Festival as well, so, which was-
That's true.
Wait, there, what's that? Not competing- Not competing with the Folk Festival?
The Folk Festival is usually on the same weekend at the ballfields. So that, yeah, that's a great point, actually. So what would happen next year if the Folk Festival comes back? Any, any idea?
Well, so their dates were originally in November, but they're, um, they're looking at September this year.
That's right.
Tony?
Yeah, my question is, if we approve this and it includes a parade and in September, our PD is not fully staffed, are, are they amenable to not doing the parade?
So they'll still have to get all the approval from Public Works and the PD. So even if you approve it now, and there's some changes, like the, say, the COVID guidelines, I'll provide that information to you, any of those changes that, that happen.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? I will call for the vote. Without a roll call, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Oh, Ronnie?
Oh, sorry, I'm, I'm having a little delay issue. Sorry, uh, did you guys just vote?
Are you in, in favor, say aye, or opposed, nay?
Okay, I missed my opportunity to comment, right?
Um, oh, gosh, out of scope here, or out of order here. Counsel, if it's all right with you, I'd like to entertain Ronnie's comments and then call for the vote again. Would that be okay?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second to approve, as is. Ronnie, go ahead and, and make your comments.
Okay, I just wanted to thank Kelly, because she answered, answered several questions for me on a shared document. And I just thought there were one or two things that might be helpful for residents, because I think there was a bit of hesitancy for some people about, well, is this event too large for the ballfield? And I was just going to ask Kelly if she maybe could restate, it sounded to me in terms of numbers, like it's pretty similar to the numbers for the Folk Festival. I mean, just so people have some idea, I think some of them thought, oh, you know, this is going to be huge, are we going to have enough parking? And it sounds, number-wise, like it's similar. I'm taking it with all of these events. It's something we can revisit if we do one year, and, um, and we have some, some problems or challenges. But Kelly, can you just restate it? I have a feeling it's pretty similar in size.
And based on the applications I have from, prior applications for the Folk Festival, um, and the application I have right now for Scots on the Rocks, the Scots on the Rocks' expected attendance this year is actually lower than the Folk Festival.
Okay, thanks, yeah. And the only other question I had heard from some people is it sounds like there maybe was kind of a culture with the event at, at OSA of people bringing dogs to the event. And we know, you know, we're a community that loves dogs. I don't know what the dog policy is at OSA, but we know we don't allow them at the ballfields. And so, um, I just had a little concern, well, um, I just hope education-wise, people know if it's moving to the ballfield. They aren't allowed there, but I also, you know, always worry when it's a little hotter, you know, that people are going to end up leaving their dogs in their cars, which is not something you want to do in September. So it sounds like, Kelly, like they'll be doing some education probably with their, with, um, with folks attending on that, right?
Yes, we've spoken with them about that. They do have some dogs that are part of the festivities as, oh, displays almost. That's kind of an odd word for it, but, um, that would be maybe about five dogs. They are telling their attendees, though, that they cannot bring their personal dogs to the ballparks. And they have, uh, FAQs on their website, so they can update that to reflect for this year at a different location. You know, please plan for this.
Thanks a lot. I just thought that was an education opportunity on those. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will go ahead and call for the vote again. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Uh, Item 7, Old Business, Proposed Ordinance 2021-11, Adopting the Pay Plan Schedule and Appointed Exempt and Election Salaries. Briefing and possible action. Carly?
Yeah, um, so as you know, we are required to hold a public hearing on our compensation ranges. And then, um, we must adopt these ranges annually by ordinance. The public hearing for this ordinance was held during our last meeting on May 11th. The ordinance outlines proposed pay ranges for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. These ranges have been adjusted by a 1.8% cost of living adjustment, but that is the only adjustment that has been made. Otherwise, there are no changes to pay ranges. We did have some changes to levels of staffing, however, and in case you're curious, we had one vacant position filled, three new positions created, seven eliminated, and one job title changed. So on balance, still, we're at a, we, we have not overfilled positions in another way to think about it. We're still at a, at a reduction.
And so, wait, so can you say that again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we had one vacant position filled, three new positions created, and then seven eliminated. So seven eliminated and four either filled or created. So we're still, you know, reduced by three is a way to, a really simplistic way of thinking of it.
And so that's just this chart versus last year's chart?
Yes, but versus last year's chart.
And, but all the salary ranges are the same?
Mm-hmm, except for the COLA adjustment.
Okay, great. Thank you for that explanation. Any questions for Carly? I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve an ordinance 2021-11, an ordinance adopting the city of Moab pay schedule and adopting the exempted elected officials' salaries for the fiscal year '21 through '22.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Ronnie?
Yes, are, are you asking me if I have discussion?
Yeah, because I can't see you.
Oh, okay, thank you for asking. Um, no, thank you. Um, no.
Okay, seeing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, quick question from the Ronnie. Um, since we're expending, is this considered expending money? Do we have to have a roll call?
Uh, good question. I would think no, because it's amending an ordinance, but it is a fiscal, it's tied fiscally.
The easiest thing to do is you can just do a roll call to be on the safe side.
You just missed the roll call, don't you, Ronnie? Okay, I'll roll call the, Mike.
Aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Kaylin?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. 7-2, 2050 Moab and Spanish Valley Regional Transportation Plan dated May 4th, 2021. Briefing and possible action. Thank you, Chuck, for sticking around for this and the next agenda item. But also, Carly, thank you for being here to answer any questions that this council has regarding this regional transportation plan. And I did see in my inbox today, too, that we received the county's letter that was their letter of support for the regional transportation plan. Did all of you on this council get a chance to see that or hear that they did that?
But it was their resolution. It wasn't a letter.
What did I say? Oh, apologies, yeah. Their resolution in support of this. So everyone got a chance to see it? Ronnie, did you get a chance to see it?
Yeah.
Okay. Chuck, did you want to talk about it? I mean, I feel like we've talked about it quite a bit. Is there more to discuss, or Carly, more to discuss on it?
I, I don't think there's a lot. Um, we put together a draft letter that we thought for council to consider, you know, and there's room to add a few, you know, if you're interested in doing that, if you have a few comments, we could craft the letter, add them to the letter, and then get that ready for the mayor's signature if council wants to do that, but I, I think UDOT would appreciate it as a letter of support that, you know, they included us, even though we maybe didn't get everything we wanted. I think, myself, I think we got a lot, so.
So council, do you want to have a discussion prior to a motion on changes that you would like to see made to the letter?
I have one question if I may. Chuck, we did get a couple, three letters from merchants, I think, concerned about the potential of lost parking on Main Street, a subject that's come up often from time to time. And when I read through this plan a few weeks ago, I don't remember seeing anything in this regional transportation plan that explicitly said that that was in the works. Am I wrong about that?
No, you're correct. There's nothing in this plan that says, take parking off of Main Street that I'm aware of, and I've read it many times.
Thank you, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Am I allowed to make a comment about?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so, um, you know, the responsibility of this council goes beyond the scope of our terms in office. And to be most effective, we should be able to address issues as they arise in the short term, but be forward-thinking and anticipate a growing and ever-changing future and set the groundwork for future councils. Most importantly, the fact that the commission and this council is willing to ignore that we have a safety issue, a congestion issue, and a noise problem in our downtown core, and is willing to cancel and erase a project that has been discussed for decades as a real potential to help alleviate these stresses in our community is truly disappointing. Fear of making an unpopular decision for less than 200 people should not outweigh the reality or of ignoring a critical problem in our downtown core that affects millions of people a year and thousands of local residents included. I'm just, yeah, I'm very dismayed that we have omitted the bypass and, um, and I appreciate the fact that we have a 30-year plan, but, um, the bypass is honestly the only project out of all of the original 14 that hit all the green buttons of congestion relief, safety, improves quality of life, and increases opportunity for active transportation. So, um, I know you guys have all commented that you don't want to have it in the plans, but I really just want to state publicly that I think it's shortsighted and-
It's in the plan, though. We just, we did an unbinding resolution that we weren't going to support it with this council. Another council can come along and change that resolution, and-
It is not-
It just, it just was overreaching, and it took, it took every bit of energy that everybody had when they were trying to solve any other problem. And that's all that I see we did, because it's still in this plan.
It's not in the, there's 13 projects now. There's not 14, like the original draft. So I, I, can you, if you can show me where it is-
Can you convince me that this, this is a good, what we got was not a bypass. If, if they can bring a, a plan to us that's a, that's a bypass, that's going to do all those things, what they brought to us is not going to hit those green buttons. That's just, that was a chart.
Okay, I respectfully disagree, and, um, and again, I just, I think if we don't have it in the plan, which it has been omitted, and yes, it is true, another council can come in and bring it forward, but this is, um, I just, I, it's really, um, it is regressive of us to take it out, but that's just-
Well, I just, I respectfully disagree. We've done what, we've done what the people that elected us to do wanted us to do.
There are, okay, there, out of the, the specific three specific projects that were voted on, extending the multi-use bike path got a great idea by 199 people, and 40 people were okay with it. That's 239 people. A bypass got 138. That's a great idea, 46, 46 people that thought that was, um, they were okay with it. That's 184 people. The frontage roads got 80 and 76, with a total of 156. So to say that everyone said that they don't want to bypass is-
Say everyone.
Okay.
Thanks, Karen.
This is a letter of support, and that's all. If you don't support it, don't vote for it.
I support everything else in this plan, except for the omission of a bypass, that's all.
Here, can I ask you a question?
Oh, sure, Ronnie, go ahead.
Um, so first of all, um, I noticed that the letter, um, specifically says, um, you know, by finding the letter of support, it doesn't necessarily mean that we support each and every, you know, element of it. I, you know, I don't have the wording right in front of me. But I'll just, um, remind people that I did note that in there. I was also going to remind folks that, um, when we wrote that resolution, let me just find it here, there is an element of it that called upon us as a body, um, let's see, blah, 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 to direct, uh, city staff to initiate discussions with council about, um, committing staff and financial resources in our upcoming budget to advance development and redevelopment in commercial zones, blah de blah de blah. But anyway, deals with, um, uh, downtown and touches on, um, transportation and, um, other elements that I think really did touch on some of, um, we're supposed to be at the opportunity to discuss all of these things you could do in place of a bypass to help with some things. And I think part of the problem is we haven't had an opportunity to have that discussion yet. But I think also part of the problem was, um, in my opinion, um, but you guys who were involved can say something more, that it did seem like there were some inherent problems with the structure of the RTP, um, meetings, where you could have had more transparency and more involvement from the community. Like, we know some of the stakeholders were not engaged that often. So, um, so I guess there, you know, depending on how people feel, there are a few different things going on there. I mean, first of all, the letter doesn't endorse every single thing in here. But also, we haven't, you know, found a time in our calendar schedules to schedule this larger discussion, which is something we said we wanted, to discuss all the other things that could be done, um, downtown. And so, uh, I was just going to point out, those are some of the things, um, on my mind. And I don't know if those of you who were involved in the process or, you know, in the packet when you were all reviewing, um, our resolution, if you had some thoughts, and maybe it's helpful, about when, when we do want to, you know, have that discussion about all the things that we could be doing. But, um, you know, part of this is, um, nobody had kind of the time or, um, the involvement with the RTP to bring up these other things. So, um, I guess the question for everybody is, do you want to, um, you know, support this plan as it is, knowing you can add to it? Or, um, do you want to somehow hold off until you're able to have those discussions? But to me, as kind of an outside observer who wasn't part of that group, it seems like that's kind of the part of the discussion we all in the community hasn't been able to have yet. All, you know, what are all the things we could do?
I'm working.
And we're at the seventh inning stretch.
I move to award the contracts for drilling the new pro replacement well number 12 to Beaman Drilling in the amount of $318,720.00.
I'll second. Thank you, Kaylin, and thank you, Tony, for the second.
No, it was Karen.
Oh, you seconded it. Okay, thank you. Uh, discussion?
Chuck, I want to ask you to spend 60 seconds and no more, tell what else you're going to do in the way of science when we drill this well. This couples in with some of the other water work I've been doing, so if you would, please.
Yes, sir. So this is a replacement well. The idea is it'll be available for us to go online. And what we've done is entered into a cooperative agreement with UDWR, the USGS, and ancillary to that is the UGS, the Utah Geological Society. And we're going to do downhole testing of the aquifer to get a better sense of the fractures and the way those various fractures carry the water as in our well, golf course wellfield. And we've included that in the contract. The cost to the city is about $6,600 for the, our share of the, the three-way cost share between UGS and, or USGS and UDWR. And I think it'll go a long way towards better understanding. And we're also going to do an extended aquifer pumping test, a 24-hour extended aquifer pumping test to see how pumping that well impacts the surrounding springs and wells. And as well as geophysical logging and standard geological logging.
Thank you. I want to just say all this, the, the big controversy, all right, because one hydrologist sees our water aquifer as one big bathtub, if you will, and another one has divided into two parts, and the deep part that sources our water is much more constrained in how much water it has in it. So these kinds of tests are great, cheap science, all right, to try to ascertain which one is right. And it matters, all right, because it depends on, this kind of stuff could end up with whether we got a lot of water to grow on or just a little. Thank you, Chuck.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Comments, questions? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Motion passes 5-0. Thanks, Chuck. Next on our agenda is 8-2, Proposed Ordinance 2021-06. Oh, see you later, Chuck. You're all done. 2021-06, An Ordinance Approving a Zoning Map Amendment for Property Located at Parcel 1-0001-0173, Approximately 398 King Creek Boulevard, From Residential-Agricultural Zone RA1 to R3 Multi-Household Residential Zone. Nora, thank you for joining us for this agenda item. I think you do have something prepared.
I do.
And then, once we're done with that, might I ask that we pull up Exhibit C during our deliberation, please?
I'm trying to figure...
The dongle. Take your time. Oops, sorry, I turned that on.
It's been 14 months since I did this, so...
Memories.
Okay. Okey-dokey, I'm getting there.
Actually, I should be singing "Welcome Back" from the song, you know. Welcome back. Chuck and I have a song thing. We sing to each other appropriate lyrics. Welcome back. I'm killing time.
Okay, well, it says it's ready to go.
I think you need to click on it in the box.
Sorry?
Oh, it's like learning Zoom, but the opposite.
I know, it's the opposite. I just took that, but that's okay.
It wasn't red, it was still connecting when you did it, so it didn't know.
At least we're not saying you're muted.
Okay.
Yay! We've got technology in person. Thank you.
Okay.
It looks like Slide 4.
Okay. Let me get situated here. Hi, everybody. It's nice to see you in real life and in person.
You as well.
It's still a little weird, you know, we got so used to, got used to just like, you know, hanging out at home and wearing shorts and, you know, all that. But here we are, and I'm glad to be back. So, we received an application for a request to rezone a property off of King Creek Boulevard from RA1, which is Residential-Agricultural Zone, to R3 Multi-Family Housing Residential Zone. It's approximately 389 King Creek Boulevard, and the mayor already read the, the tax ID number. Right now, there's not an official address, because there's nothing there. But it will be 389 King Creek Boulevard. The property owner is Neil Johnson, the applicant is Jacob Satterfeld Field. It's about 10 acres, 9.9 plus or minus. And the current zoning is RA1, and the proposed zoning is R3. So this sort of tells the story of what's going on here. This is the parcel where my little mouse is now. And it's currently zoned RA1, as I mentioned in the proposal, is to R3, right here in this lighter green area, that's all RA1. And this is a little enclave of, of larger properties, which is typical in the RA1. And right now, these are all on septic tanks, so they're not connected to our sewer, which is one of the reasons they remain big parcels. This parcel, however, so it has RA1 on this side, RA1 on the other side, and then this is our industrial zone. R3 is across the street. And then this is our central commercial zone, or C3. It does, the property does have frontage right on King Creek Boulevard. There was one, one comment from the Baptist Church that they were concerned about access through their property, but that will not be necessary. But this is for a rezone only, and we have not received... Oh, no, I got the wrong one, dang it. There we go. And we have not received a site plan yet. Usually, the, the first thing that folks do, and they have a right to ask for a rezone on a piece of property, there is no site plan. We don't know what is being proposed at this time. And that's appropriate. A rezone, you're supposed to sort of think big picture and long-term. And if it's, if, once it's rezoned, if it's not this particular developer, somebody else could come along and make application under the R3 zone. Okay, so the RA1 zone, I think this is kind of interesting. This is from the purpose statement in our development code. And it says, "Established for the primary purpose of providing a location where residential development associated with limited numbers of livestock can be maintained, characterized by large locks or tracks of land interspersed by dwellings, bars, etc." And then it goes on to say, "Builders and developers of property should bear in mind, therefore, that primacy is given in this zone to residential development and that the raising of animals and fowl will likely be curtailed as residential development takes place." So there are some that say that this is kind of a holding zone, or this, these are in areas that were historically lower density, not served by sewer, but that at some point, there, there, it was anticipated that that sort of agriculture, those sort of agricultural uses would likely fade away and be replaced by primarily residential uses. And these are the permitted uses in that zone. So it's, it's fairly limited. It does allow planned unit developments, though, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit later. So it's parks, keeping animals, it also includes single families. And then we have the R3 zone. This is our multifamily residential zone. And its purpose is to provide appropriate locations within the city for high-density residential development and generally located in the central park of, the central part of the city, adjacent to commercial areas where the impact of vehicular traffic and parking is consonant, I don't know if that's the right word, but that's what's in the code, with adjacent use of land. So it's characterized by more compact, compact development and higher volumes of traffic. So it goes on to say, "Owners and developers of property should bear in mind that primacy is given to multi-household dwellings, boarding houses, rest homes, and other high-density residential uses, and should develop and maintain their property in recognition thereof." So this is really where we want to see the more dense development. And these are the permitted uses. Multifamily dwellings, one-household dwellings, two-household dwellings, and then a variety of other, other uses. So something that came up in the public comments and the city council's comments has to do with the sewer. And I may turn it over to Chuck here to, if you have, after the presentation, if you have specific questions about that. The sewer will have to be provided to the site one way or another when it develops, not right now. And if the applicant were to build 10 units in the RA1 zone, as it is today, they would have to hook up and pay for the sewer. If they end up doing 120 units, they would have to pay and build the sewer to the property. The city is not responsible for that. The developer would be entirely responsible for building it to city standards, and then they would turn it over to us. They would dedicate it to us to, to maintain. So, no project has been designed, we don't know what the need is. So a site plan is really needed for our consultant to do model, sewer modeling, to really figure out how we make sure that this is adequately served by sewer when the time comes, which is not now. So it's a requirement either way, really, on this piece of property. I just want to make that clear. And then planned unit developments. So in the existing...
Can I just summarize? So sewer is complicated, and it would be paid for by the developer.
Right.
Okay.
And it doesn't matter what the zone is.
Just because I think a lot of questions are around that, so sewer's complicated, but any sewer improvements would be paid for by the developer.
That's correct, whether it's RA1 or R3. It doesn't really matter, or R2, or whatever. So a planned unit development is a section of code that I personally have never used since I've been here in two years, but we do have some precedent for it. And it's allowable in the RA1 zoning district. And you can do it on parcels that are more than five acres. And the intent of it is to cluster development and leave larger chunks of open space and get a little bit better design and use of land. And it's set down regulations to achieve a better relationship between open space and buildings, greater harmony between the development and the surrounding area. And then it goes on to say, it's, this type of use would be considered a large-scale PUD, whatever it is when we get there. But the standard allowable density shall be six dwelling units per acre, so that's 60 units, plus or minus, up to a maximum of eight units per acre, utilizing the existing open space alternative or the affordable housing density bonus. So the base open space requirement is 40%. If they provide 50%, they get an additional unit. If they provide 60%, they get two additional units. So that would be eight units per acre. Or they could get that additional two units by providing, I think it's three or two out of the eight units as affordable, deed-restricted. So it's, it's something in place that an owner of a RA1 property can use to increase their density. It seems like a big increase to me over one unit per acre, but I think it was anticipated that, you know, as these RA1 parcels develop, that it's important to keep a little bit more open space with them, more compatible with the areas. Also talks about the need for playground sidewalks, non-motorized pathways, and trails. Any review for a project, whether it be a PUD or a site plan review, which is what it would be in the R3, would include things like vehicular access, potential secondary access, trails, setbacks from adjacent uses, and those kinds of things to, to try to fit in better with the community.
Can I just ask a quick question regarding PUD? Because I think it's a good distinction, and I ran into this before I was mayor, back in the developer years, that because it's RA1, the, the development would be limited to single-family and two-family. Like, they, if, if it were to stay as RA1, they could do the PUD, they could have that increased density, but they couldn't do multifamily, so they wouldn't be able to do townhomes, apartments, or anything other than a two-unit.
And I am unsure about that. I had, like I said, I haven't worked with it at all.
I'm pretty sure, because it, it references back to what is, what is allowable in terms of housing typology in the RA1. At least that's been our interpretation in the past. And so, well, and I'm just pointing that out because it sounds like, you know, there's additional density you can have doing a PUD, but that density can only be actualized by the single-family or, or, or a two-family unit.
And I am unaware of that, but it certainly could be, because I've never used this, this section of the code before, and the mayor probably knows better than I.
It's very clunky to use the PUD. It sounds good, but it's very clunky.
So in Section 17.54.030, the ground floor area of any one household and two household dwellings should not, shall not be less than 1,000 square feet, except in a planned unit development, so...
It seems to imply that sense.
That's like the size of house, but not like the number of units together. So with this PUD, they couldn't do an apartment complex. They couldn't reflect what's across the street from them.
But they could do a townhome.
They could not do a townhome.
I'm looking at the code, and it, it does say that townhouses are permitted use in PUDs.
Oh, in PUD?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, that's, so anyway, they could do that today with the RA1 zoning. So that's really the end of my presentation. I wanted to kind of just get right to the point. The Planning Commission held a public hearing, and there were a couple people on the phone, but they had already written letters. And so there was no really additional input. The Planning Commission discussion, if you didn't have a chance to, to listen to the meeting discussion, the majority of the Planning Commission felt very strongly that we need affordable housing so badly in this community that they want to provide additional opportunities by rezoning property to R3. And they forwarded a positive recommendation to the city council, and the vote was four to one with Jessica, what's her last name?
Lili.
Lili, I just call her Jesso, you know, so I, Jessica Lili voting against, and the others voting in favor. So...
Nora.
I'm not quite done yet, but almost. So this is what the PUD sort of charts look like. Two out of eight dwellings, or three out of eight dwellings, and it talks about the income. So that's just a little bit additional information on the density bonuses. So your options are to approve the ordinance, which effectively would rezone the parcel to R3 Multi-Household Residential Zone, continue or table action to a later meeting with specific direction to us and the applicant as to what additional information you need to make a decision, or deny the rezone request, giving specific findings for the decision. This is a discretionary decision on your part. There's nothing that says you have to do it. It's not like a conditional use that if you can meet, you know, if, if you can meet the conditions, then we, you have to approve it. It's not like that. This is discretionary, you can choose to approve it or not approve it. And then there's a, oh, positive recommendation. Anyway, if you want to approve it, there's some language referring back to the parcel number.
Thank you, Nora.
So if you have questions about sewer, we can call Chuck back up. Otherwise, you can ask me questions.
Questions for Nora or Chuck, or a motion? Or a discussion?
Well, I will just say that, as you guys saw in the material, I'm curious to know where sewer and road egress might come in. I mean, they've talked about King Creek Boulevard and possibly coming, extending second south over on the west side of it, across other...
That has not been discussed at all with the applicant. It's not proposed at this point in time, because we don't have a site plan. So when we have a site plan or a PUD plan, those are the things, those are part of the things that we have to address.
Other comments? Questions?
I guess this is Ronnie, sorry, I'm, I'm missing a little bit, because I just went from the YouTube to, to this. Did anyone, sorry, it's a little bit hard when I'm missing some of the conversation, but I guess I was just going to add for colleagues benefit, after asking a lot of questions about this and getting a lot of answers, I am personally opposed to a zone change, because this is always a problem. Utah doesn't have contract zoning. We're told we don't know what's going to happen to the property, and so that is all moot. And we just have to think about the other things that could happen if we made the zone change with the new zone. However, it's always messy, because then we always have illusion to the potential for a proposed project. But of course, since there's no contract, there's no guarantee of it. So from a rhetorical standpoint, it's difficult for me to have all of the illusion made to housing when there's no contract connection with that. And I feel like we're always dangled with a carrot on a stick that never actually shows up in reality. And I can remember very painfully a few times... And I can remember very painfully a few times when we've been promised, for example, apartments. And years and years later, they never came to fruition. And so I personally looked over the documents. One of the key questions was the area is zoned in error. I don't believe it was zoned in error. It looks to me like we, if your concern is housing, we do have the possibility for a lot of additional housing there the way it is. And I can't see how it's consistent with the housing around it to change it to R3, given the information we have. And I still personally, even though I know nothing is proposed, I'm not convinced about long-term sewer costs, just as we all nickel and dime everything moving forward and worry about where every dollar is coming from. And we know infrastructure is not keeping up. Initial impact fees don't keep up with longer infrastructure costs. So over time, the cost comes to bear over the rate payers. And if there's anything complicated going on here, I don't feel comfortable potentially setting up the community for something that might have a higher bill. But again, I mean, I don't think this was zoned in error. And I do think there's a lot of possibility for what could happen here on RA1. So I'm opposed to a change. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, Ronnie. Other comments?
Yeah, I think Ronnie and I are remembering the same promises of affordable housing and apartments and-
We have no promise here, by the way.
I know we have no promise. And even when we have a promise, there is still nothing there. PUD might be clunky. It can be done. And you can create affordable housing because that's where I live. I'm not willing to upzone this without some assurances, and we can't require those assurances. So I'm not inclined to support this.
If I may, I'll go on record. It's very much similar to what Ronnie said. Without more clarification about what might be built in terms of a PUD or whatever the zoning and so forth, I'm inclined, I mean, considering that you can build seventy units, more or less, the zoning that he's got, in a PUD and make it attractive, particularly for bike trails going through there, because we've had complaints from noters, from Mountain View residents who want to get downtown. And that all could be wired into a PUD with the right site plan. So I'm inclined to deny the request as well.
So I feel like this is a, we do need more housing desperately. I feel like this is a good location because of its central. It's adjacent to Kane Creek, which is the obvious access point, which is already a significant road in the city compared to other... And relatively wide and able to handle the traffic. It has good pedestrian access to downtown. So potentially lower traffic use relative to other new housing. And compared to new dense housing in the valley, which is, requires wheel transportation, if not car transportation, this is really well situated for low-impact biking and walking. This... We do have significant wastewater treatment plant costs. So, and we've elected not to collect, to allow new lodging and collect the impact fees from that. So having density in the city helps us to pay for our already committed costs for the wastewater treatment plant. So I feel like, even though there's challenges with the sewer, ultimately, adding density close to downtown is where we want to put it. And I do feel like the, even though there's no guarantee that bike path challenges can be solved, that I'm hopeful that with the unified transportation plan that we can flesh out our non-motorized pathways, including along the Pat Creek riparian corridor and floodway, which is not readily developed, developable. So it may, I mean, a developer may well accommodate it or might just negotiate a little connector into that floodway where it would be more aesthetic and not take away from future development usable area for other purposes. So I realize it's controversial, but I am inclined to support it. And I feel like if new development is not yielding the housing or the affordability that we want, then it's incumbent upon us to change our land use code to steer it in that direction. And I feel like we really, it's slightly off topic, but I feel like we really need to get on that because I think that it, I would say that it's not quite yielding the results that I would expect. And I feel like there's adjustments that we need to make and make them soon. But that's a separate issue from this particular application.
The applicant is here too, if you want him to speak. It's up to you.
I don't think we need comments at this time. Thank you. Karen, did you want to share anything?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Kalen. With all the CAS meetings that I have attended and Salt Lake meetings, I mean, there is a push for us. There's an affordable housing issue throughout the West. And the only way to really change that is to change our zones and allow for more dense housing opportunities. And I am all about active transportation. These are the perfect roads to get to downtown, to access the hospital, the schools, our tourist businesses on Main Street. And I would really hope that the developers will take that into consideration and try to have easier access for their residents. So I would, I tend to be in favor of upzoning this as well.
Any other comments? I'm sure you probably all know where I sit on this. So I probably don't have to share my thoughts since I don't get to vote anyway. But I do appreciate the information, at least that a PUD does allow townhomes. That was not the interpretation back when I was looking at doing a PUD. And that is promising. Because then they could have a, you know, if this upzone doesn't pass, the developers or the property owners still have capacity to do density.
And just a point of clarification, it is a listed permitted use.
In the RA1, townhomes?
No, with this, it's a PUD.
In the PUD.
But is the PUD that you're reading from, is it any PUD anywhere can have townhomes? So can, because I think this is clarific, this would be helpful clarification.
And I just clicked away from it. Give me one second.
Mayor, I'd also like to say that, especially since we are finally having a discussion about property tax, I would be more inclined to accept higher density with the notion that, I mean, typically, it costs us to have homes. We know that. We make our money through businesses, but this is-
Here are the permitted uses in a PUD.
So all PUDs?
All PUDs can do townhomes.
Yep.
We should probably do a flyer to developers about that.
Modular homes.
And then just one other point of clarification. Nora, you put in your staff report that if, that there should be findings if there, in the event that there is not-
Yeah.
That the council decides not to rezone. And I just clicked away from that section. But Nora did a nice job of outlining in her staff report the questions that the council should consider, which might be helpful for any findings you need to make if you are not going to permit the rezone.
Yeah, and I can bring those up. They're also, it's in your staff report?
Well, I feel like the deliberation, the deliberation that we had, and then the motion itself, wherever we get to, would be sufficient for that, right?
I would just ask Nora to bring those up to make sure. Nora, do you want me to find it?
No, I got it. So here are the approval criteria. Was the existing zone property, zone, was the zone for the property adopted in error? Has there been a change in character of the area? Is there a need for the proposed zoning within the area or community? Is the proposed zoning classification compatible with the surrounding areas? Will there be adverse impacts and/or adverse impacts and/or can any adverse impacts be mitigated? Will benefits be derived by the community by granting the proposed zoning? Are adequate facilities available to serve development for the type and scope of development suggested by the proposed zoning classification? If utilities are not available, can they be reasonably extended? Does the application conform with the provisions of the Moab general plan, which is not very specific in this instance? So if there was a motion that was, would be made to deny the rezone, you could cite any and all of those as what your findings are in support of either supporting it or denying it. But certainly, if you deny it, it's a good idea always to have some findings.
So then, would that be in the form of a motion to deny based on findings?
Yeah.
We could, but what if there's a motion to approve and then it doesn't pass?
Well, there would have to be another motion then.
So we're looking for a hard denial if that's the case.
Technically, I think if there's a motion and it doesn't pass, then I, it, then we would have to rely on the findings and deliberation. So I think I did hear some discussion of A. I've heard some discussion regarding E. Boy, this is like an eye test, isn't it?
I know. I can't read that. I'm very-
Cover your left eye. But no, I think I've heard some discussion on a few of those items. But I thought if there's any other discussion for the council, if there's any other points you'd like to raise, given those criteria, now would be the time to review it. Because our bylaws do say if there's a motion and it fails, then that is a denial of, that's essentially an action in opposition. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I guess, well, I want to call for a motion.
Can I ask Chuck a question?
Sure.
So Chuck, we would not be responsible for getting the sewer to this property to correct. I mean-
It's really a yes or no. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I can yell. Thank you. Excuse me.
Hello?
Yeah, all the costs of getting the sewer to our main line-
Yes.
-from that property would be incumbent upon the developer, whether they rezone or even under today's current conditions, they would have to pay all those expenses.
And what about all the other utilities?
Same scenario. They pay for all the utilities. That's pretty much standard operating procedure. If the utilities aren't right there, they're responsible for getting them to their property.
Pay their way.
Much as lying back is done, they've spent-
Right. And then anybody along that line would be able to then develop because that main line would be put in place by this developer.
That's right. Because it becomes a public utility, they build it to our standards and the state's standards. And once we accept it, then it becomes, if there's capacity for future development, then future development can tie into it as well.
So I have a question maybe for you and Lori, and that is, it sounds like you, if there is a vote to deny, that you would like, so far, it seems like the findings have been geared towards approval. But if the will of the council is to deny, would you like to have more time to support them? Or are you comfortable with sort of the ad hoc findings that will be generated tonight?
Can I field that question? So if you were to make a motion in favor, much like what is in our packet, then during deliberation, after a motion and a second had been made, I would expect that those that might vote against that motion would state their reason for that in the deliberation.
And I'm-
It would probably be-
So to answer your question, Kalen, yes, and Leida, you can rely on what's in the deliberation, absolutely. And, but it is most helpful for us if your comments are tailored towards those criteria and you're identifying any of those criteria that you're using to support or oppose any motion. It's much easier for our staff later to say, "These were the findings by the councils," should there be any process challenging the decision. Make sense?
I think so. So I guess I would just, for the sake of efficiency, if the apparent majority of the council are prepared to make those findings, that's fine. Or if you would like to table to collect your thoughts, that would seem okay too. I'm not funding to make a motion.
I would encourage action as opposed to table. Because if it's tabled, then it'll happen, it'll be yet another council meeting.
Yeah, and as I mentioned, this isn't one of those situations like a conditional use where the findings are really critical if you're going to deny it. So these are the criteria that have been listed in the code. It's totally discretionary on your part. So I'm not sure that the specific findings are important as, for example, a conditional use permit. And I think several of them have been addressed during the deliberation, and I don't think we have any problem with our record, either way, really.
The only other thing that I would say is that the Planning Commission did forward this to us favorably with one dissent, which is worth consideration.
I was like, oh, no.
Time to end this deliberation. Is there a motion?
Well, Mayor, may I offer my personal take on what the findings are in support of denying the application? Very simply stated, the applicant has basically made the argument that the town needs denser, presumably more affordable housing. My finding is that use of the PUD, which qualifies in this particular circumstances, affords acceptable density towards that end. At the same time, it maintains the agriculture and riparian aspects of that area.
That works.
And it wasn't, that particular zone was not zoned in error at the time it was zoned. A lot, I mean, is there a need for the zone change? I don't know if there's a need for the zone change. There's a need for housing, but that doesn't mean the zone has to change. Will benefits be derived? Probably, and they may. And there may be, and there may be negative impacts that can't be mitigated. I can't address every single one of those based on what we've got. But I think we've made a case that we're not just denying it because we don't want it.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 2021-06, an ordinance approving the zoning map amendment for property located at parcel 01, 0001, 0173, approximately 398 Kane Creek Boulevard, Moab, Utah, 84532, amending the subject parcel zone from RA1 residential agricultural zone to R3 multi-household residential zone.
One second. Thank you, Kalen, for the first, and Karen for the second. It sounds, there, it feels like, it seems to me that prior to those two motions, there was comment that would suggest that the approval criteria was not met. But would, Laurie, would you like to hear that repeated now that the motion has been stated?
No, that's okay. We can rely on the comments that are previously been made.
Okay. Would anyone like to make any final comments regarding this agenda item? Ronnie, any final comments?
No, I'm just, I'm really trying to concentrate, trying to hear. So I'm missing probably about 10 to 20 percent. I think I got enough. No comment.
Okay. I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
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 The motion fails two to three.
Okay, thank you.
And Laurie, do you want an alternate motion denying, or is this sufficient per our bylaws?
This is sufficient.
I think so. Moving on to Agenda Item eight-three, our inter-local cooperation agreement between Utah County and Moab City for the administration of the 2021 municipal election. Summer's here to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
I would just like to state for Kalen, because he was very clear in his motion and approving the resolution, that I did reach out to Utah County, and they have assured me that they will scan all received ballots and verify signatures daily, Monday through Friday. We didn't put in the days of the Tuesday and Thursday, because if we have more, I'd like to be able to have some wiggle room.
Yes.
If we have more, we'll send them up more often.
Yeah, I appreciate your work with Utah County. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move to approve the inter-local agreement between Utah County and Moab City for the administration of the 2021 municipal election. Thank you, Karen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tony, for the second. Final discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in, I'm sorry, one second. Ronnie, did you have any discussion?
Ah, thanks, no discussion.
Okay. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Section nine, approval of bills against the city of Moab. Tony, is there a motion?
There is a motion. I move to approve the bills against the city of Moab in the amount of $158,000, one hundred,
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Karen, for the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Is there a motion to go now into executive closed session?
I move to go into executive closed session for the discussion of the character of professional competence for physical or mental health of an individual or individuals.
Thank you, Kalen. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Karen. That is a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five-zero. We're now going to take a brief recess while we move into executive closed session, and we'll just be sure that the building...